All right, thank you all for coming to the Cloverdale City Council meeting. We'll reconvene at 6:01 PM. Call the meeting to order for, can we please have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, in the name of our republic.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you, sir. And no, any report on closed session?
Mayor, the council had closed session today to discuss property negotiations. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Conflict of interest declarations, do we have any tonight? Seeing none. The agenda review, we do have a change. We're going to change the order in which it is done. We're going to go after D, we'll go to F, the consent calendar, and then go back to E, proclamations and presentations, and then move forward from there. So, all right, we'll move into C, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do we have anyone in the live public audience that would like to make a comment? State your name. We have a new system, just to let everyone know. There are some note cards for names to fill out, to put your name on, to give to Michael, so we can get it correct for the record, so we don't misspell your name or have to ask if you don't want to give it in public.
We're okay, we're set. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, city staff, chief. Thank you for your time. Just a real quick question. Will the public have an opportunity to comment publicly on the selection of mayor and vice mayor when that agenda item is up?
Yes, sir. That's under item, I believe, is H3, if I remember correctly.
Fantastic, thank you.
Sir? Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, pardon me for being rummy. My name is Tom Kaney. I am the CEO of the Cloverdale Citrus Fairgrounds, and unfortunately, it's taken me four months to introduce myself to you. But in the meantime, I've got to meet many of you individually, working on a number of different projects, and I enjoy being part of your community, and I stand by as a resource for the city to make it a better place.
Thank you, sir. Very nice to meet you. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none. Michael, do we have anyone in the Zoom audience?
Double check, but I don't think anybody's raising their hand at this time.
For those on Zoom, if you would like to make a public comment, please hit the raise hand icon.
Thank you, Mayor. No one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay. And we'll move on to D, communications.
Mayor, members of council, there's one communication that was received and included in your agenda packet. It's a proposal to form an Alexander Valley Water District. This was submitted by the Russian River Property Owners Association, dated November 11th. The proposal describes the efforts by the association to organize around the issue of water, and in forming a water district, it would help to address some governance issues as well as management issues relative to both surface water and groundwater. There concurrently was a request to support, to write a letter of support to an undesigned person, but which may be our senator, Mike McGuire, or Chair of the Board of Supervisors, James Gore, in support of forming this district. And again, the intent is to enable some of our neighboring property owners that aren't currently represented by the city to have formal representation to address some of the challenges that lie ahead relative to the Potter Valley Project, also groundwater management basins. And I do note tonight, there are some representatives here who just want to address the council on this correspondence, or at least speak to the correspondence that was received. Ultimately, we're asking council tonight if you would be willing to enable the mayor to append his name to the letter of support. Some alternatives for council would be to refer to a subcommittee for further review and consideration. I note tonight, Mr. Maitini, as well as Ms. Gary Alder are here.
Thank you very much. We also want to respect your time and not take too much of it. I know you have a busy agenda. With the hope that the proposal will be for you, we are working closely with State Senator Mike McGuire on the potential of creation through special legislation. We're also working with Supervisor Gore, perhaps to use the last hope half. We have not made a determination which way to go. Primarily, I just want to be very clear, this does not impact anybody's existing project. It is that we seem to have the strategy of opportunity for the city to work on sustainability and work on the city's. We're surprising, we don't want to surprise you, but we would appreciate your support and moving forward. Since you're here, do you want to do some quick ones?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, much. I hope that's where the meeting is at. We're moving forward together, but we need to have a few questions. We all need you for your time, if you have questions, to contact us at any time.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Adrian. Really appreciate it.
So, Mike, or Adrian?
Vice Mayor has a question for you. Would you mind taking a couple of questions right now? Are you fielding a couple?
As shy as I am.
I know you made it down the steps pretty quick there.
back from you on what's going on with the new creation here?
I don't necessarily, there's not a specific play, process in place, but just by that question, what we would suggest, what I would suggest, if you guys are open to it, we would continue the communication through your city manager to disseminate through to the council, and we just make a point of doing that. I've had the opportunity to meet with the city manager of Heelsburg. That's a process that we're using with them as well, and we're happy to do that. If there's a different process you want to use?
Thank you. David's okay with that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really think it's critical that the city participate. I really support that. I really think it's important that they have a seat at the table, be involved in the conversations as well, because water is a big deal, and certainly, we're all concerned. And like Vice Mayor mentioned, we want to see that water continue flowing down the Russian River.
And that's exactly the issue, you know, that we're dealing with, is not having a seat at the table. The city of Cloverdale, I mean, all of that, the efforts on the two basin solution, everybody didn't get a chance to voice their issues, and we want to change that and work with you guys to do it as well.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
I want to go ahead and take a moment to say thank you to Adrián, in particular, for this initiative, given that we have worked together for three years in the Russian River Watershed Association, and as a fellow of the Water Education for Latino Leaders, this issue is very important and very versed at this point. And I am very happy to have been able to visit the Potter Valley Project, as well as Mendocino Lake and Lake Sonoma and so on. So it's very important that we continue to work as a region, supporting one another, and the needs of Geyserville and all of the growers in that area are very important to us, because our constituents also work in that area. So it is not a foreign, and it's not a foreign request, and it's not a foreign situation. So thank you very much. I'm very happy to have worked with you, and I look forward to continuing to support in any way that I can as a leader in the community.
Just talk loud, just yell.
Be able to support the formation of a district, so thank you.
I don't have a lot of questions, because, just to let the public know who didn't read the packet, you submitted a very clear, very concise, seven-page argument as to why you need to form the group, so that you have a seat at the table. And so, it's important for folks in Cloverdale to understand that this does not put any of our water rights or any of our considerations at risk. In fact, it's creating, it's helping to support the creation of another partner, another voice, to have more local control over what is in our future, which is a monetized Russian River. So I would welcome the explanation, which is very well-written, clear, concise, and you make your points very clear, and it's obvious that you will be an excellent partner in lobbying for all of our interests with the city of Cloverdale. And we may agree on some things, and we may not agree on other things, but supporting you or having a strong voice and a seat at the table, I think, is something that is very much in our interest. I would be interested in hearing what the city manager would prefer, but I would, I'd like to go ahead and just put this on the plate of finance and admin for a support, to analyze a little bit further, but ultimately, a support letter that can be signed by the mayor.
I think, as recommended by Councilmember Bagby and discussed by council, to place this on a future subcommittee agenda for further discussion, ongoing discussion allows for a lot more robust conversation around what this proposal entails. I think it's going to be something that will involve quite a bit of discussion amongst regional partners, including Sonoma Water, the city, and some of our joining cities.
I'd like to just volunteer, if you're going to hold another meeting, I'm very happy to come up, participate, answer questions, and be an additional part of the process. I also just want to thank you for acknowledging the paper that was put together, hearing that. I usually would want to take credit for writing it. I did not. There's about 14 people who've been working on this, almost 14 months now, specifically Walter Keizer, who's had a long history of working with district formation, is the gentleman who actually drafted the paper, and I'll pass that on to him later after a meeting's done, before it goes too far to his head, but he did a good job. Thank you for that.
All right, well, thank you both, and we look forward to working with you. So, thank you. Okay, we'll skip forward to F, the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council, unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Do we have any items to be polled?
F4, please.
Any other items to be polled? So we have F1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7.
Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the consent calendar excluding F.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Michael, when you're ready.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance? Consent calendar passes 5-0.
I am pulling this out, because throughout my tenure in council, I have been against an SRO, and I continue to hold that position to the last day of service. So I would like to vote on this, so I would like to move, so that the rest of the council can vote on it. I vote no to that. So I am making a motion to vote on F4.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the item forward by title only.
Mayor Lance, no one's raising their hand at this time.
You can use mine.
I can speak loudly. Okay, so, Vice Mayor, did you want to make a motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, before we make a motion, I just want to, just for the public's sake, I just want to make it real clear that, you know, this SRO position is really an important position within the school. It really helps work with troubled children that may have problems, that are kind of going down the wrong path, that they could kind of give more direct attention to try to work with them, their parents, and the school staff. They improve the communications. There's been a lot of research done in this over the years. I understand there are some fears that float around that position, having an officer on campus, but the good really does outweigh the bad. And I just want to emphasize that, because there's been incidents of bullying, fighting, not necessarily in the Cloverdale schools, but in schools generally. And having a school resource officer where the youth is trusting, they got a relationship with that officer, they feel comfortable going up, speaking with them, and sharing their feelings and what's going on, it's critical. And so, the position really does work well, and it's a win-win for the school district, certainly for the community as a whole, to try to direct youth that are going down the wrong path, get them back on track, and hopefully become very successful as they grow up. So I really do support the program. I just wanted to share those comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to go ahead and also make an explanation of why I'm voting against this. This is part of a legacy that we inherited in the 1980s of a route from school to jail, especially for minority students. In addition, the position of SRO has some areas that are gray, and it also implies for SROs to go and knock on people's doors if their child is misbehaving. At this stage of the game, the country needs counselors, it needs social workers, it needs advisors. There's where the money needs to go, to avoid these situations. There are very many ways, and the chief has proven that, to engage with youth and with schools. I have no fear on SROs. This is a position that has been removed throughout the country, throughout the state, and they have, there is as much good and as much negative when it comes to an SRO. It is my stand, it has been my stand, and it will continue to be my stand. So now that there is a motion, I would second for it to, I don't know if I can second it to have the vote, or would it be somebody else?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I believe that there's a motion on the table, and if there isn't a second, then it would fail. So if we could adhere to Robert's Rules of Order, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. So at this point, now that we have had everyone have their ability to speak, we do not have a full motion on the table, because there was not a resolution read. So if you want to do it by title only, I would appreciate it.
I'd like to offer the resolution by title only, please. My mic's working. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Cloverdale and Cloverdale Unified School District for a school resource officer in authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement.
I'll second that.
Michael, when you're ready.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Item passes 4-1.
At this point, we're going to go back to E, proclamations and presentations. If you guys don't mind, I want to skip to E4, I believe it is, which is the student liaison report. I apologize for the microphones tonight. It looks like they probably weren't plugged in throughout the week.
Evening, everyone, for my report today. I have that drama students perform their one-act plays on December 2nd to 3rd. Key club members and other high school students have helped serve food for the Kuanas crab feed. FFA received 217 pairs of socks under sock drive. We are in finals week, and next week is final week, finals next week is winter break, and students return on January 4th, 2023. Before Thanksgiving and Christmas breaks, the school has provided COVID-19 tests for students that may need them. And for sports, girls' basketball finished third place in their first annual Sandy Mac Tournament. Boys' basketball finished first place in the Mac Miller Tournament. Boys soccer played their first home game on Monday, and unfortunately, lost 0 to 7. Girls soccer had their first home game on Tuesday, and they tied 1 to 1. And next soccer, girls' game is home game at 6:00. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Bagby, do you have any preference over which ones we do first of the next three? Okay. Well, the next ones we have are the three service recognitions for Councilmember Cruz, Councilmember Paula, and Vice Mayor Walter. I think we start with Vice Mayor Walter, because he will be staying here, and he'll be quick and easy. Wants to go first.
You don't have to say anything, nice. Don't worry about it. You don't, that's right. No, you're not.
Well, guess, we're thankful for all that you do for our city, and however many years you've put in here. You continue to support the city, you continue to put your name in the hat, to stand up and do what is right for all of us, and to see you doing it, what would this be, probably your sixth term?
Sixth, yeah.
Is amazing. That's 24 years of service up here on the dais. Being here for two, I know that is a lot of service. That is a lot to ask of one person, and you have taught me a lot as we've gone along. I look forward to the next at least two years with you, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and I'd like to thank my fellow council members. Are you going to give me the plaque?
Yeah.
I wanted to just thank my current council members and my past council members, and I think we work great as a team, and I hope that continues going forward. And it's been 20 years, and hopefully, I'll do the remaining four. Thank you.
I was just going to say, let's outdo Sam Salmon in Cloverdale.
Do what?
Outdo Sam Salmon.
Oh, yeah. I don't think I'll catch him.
Joe or Melanie? Okay. Hold on here, I'll give this to you now, we'll take pictures later.
Thank you.
Next person we have up is Joe Paula. Joe, this is very quick. We called upon you after you decided you didn't want to do this anymore, you hung up your hat, and we basically begged you to come back to fill a big seat when Mayor Turner left us unexpectedly. And I know you didn't want it, but you knew for the good of the city, you stepped up to the plate, and I can't say how much I appreciate it, because I have learned a lot from you throughout the decades of time that I've got to know you through law enforcement and all the positions you've taken on, and so I thank you again for this as well.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to be up here, to work with my fellow council members, work with the public. We've accomplished a lot. We do, we work well together. Most of the time, we try to talk things through. We may disagree on certain issues, but that's kind of why there's five people, so we can all share our opinion, and when the vote comes down, three, move it forward, and we move on. But we all have what's best for our community at heart. We want to make this the best city we can with what we got to work with. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and it wasn't torture coming back, but, you know, I do have things I want to do when I'm not on the dais, and I get more time to do those now, so, but thank you. It's been a pleasure to work up here for, what, 14 years?
Just one more quick thing. I know through law enforcement, you do things right away, and politics is quite the opposite. You know, it's get prepared to have solutions, and so to have you here and seeing the things you've pushed through and made happen over the past two years is pretty amazing to me, knowing how politics work, so.
Thank you.
Make a big difference. Cloverdale. Last but not least, I saved this one because it is the longest. You know, I'll be very honest, you were probably the last person I expected to work so well with up here on this dais, and you and I formed a friendship and a bond that not only surprised me, probably surprised our town. And we came to a lot of negotiations and a lot of resolutions together, and solved a lot of issues and brought a lot of people together with what we did. And I thank you for everything you did for our town, for our Latin community that you have stood up so strongly for, whether it's just in Cloverdale, and in the region. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. If you want, I will read this out loud. Please.
You know, Councilmember Cruz, I just have to say something. When you were first running for city council four years ago, Councilmember, former Councilmember Turner and myself, the three of us kind of formed a block, and I really appreciate the work that you've done with the Latino community, and I hope that you stay involved somehow. I have reached out to Jade, and her and I will be meeting, to see what we can do about keeping that connection with the city council going. So I really appreciate what you've done for the city council and the community. So, thank you.
Melanie, are you ready yet?
This is not an easy job, and anyone who steps up to lead should get credit, and I just especially want to thank Marta on her departure. She changed the landscape in our community and how we are seen throughout the county through her regional service. Her knowledge of infrastructure and water, and how she dove into zero waste is an example to anybody who, everyone who is interested in public service, and she's going to be greatly missed. I want to thank all of my council members and anyone who stands up to serve, because it's not easy, and it is greatly appreciated. it's not easy and it is greatly appreciated.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Cloverdale for having elected me. And as I said from the very beginning, I was going to be a one-term councilmember. I do have a profession. I do have a life. And there were changes that needed to happen in Cloverdale. There was organizing to take place in Cloverdale. A mi gente latina, a ustedes, mi dedicación. It's because there was people in the shadows and that no longer is. And I am very proud, not only of what I've done in Cloverdale, but my legacy in the county of Sonoma. When I first came to the county of Sonoma, there was absolutely no representation of people of color in the Mayors and Council Members Association. Now, we have had Mayor of Hillsburg. We've had Mayor of Windsor. We have Mayor of Santa Rosa. We have Mayor of Sonoma. We have Mayor of Runner Park. And we have the first elected BIPOC in Cotati. So, it's a challenge, and it's proud. It's a proud standing. I have served with dignity. I have been honest and ethical at all times. And to this day, many people don't like me because of how much of a hardworking person I have been, not only in Cloverdale, not only among the elderly, the children, and the Latino people, but also for all those in need. I will continue to serve the county as a commissioner on the status of women. I'm entering my second term. I have two more years on that, and I already served two years. And I will continue to be a voice because a voice is never erased. The words are in the air, and they permeate. Those of you who have laughed at me, those of you who have put me down, I stand tall and I stand proud. Thank you very much to Cloverdale.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments as well. First of all, besides thanking our city councilmembers, I'd like to really thank our city manager, city attorney, and our city staff. I mean, they have been instrumental in supporting us every step of the way. Their job's not easy either. We work on a shoestring budget. We have a lot more wants than we have staff. We certainly have a lot more wants than we have money. But they do work hard trying to get these things done, and for that, I want to thank you for all your support and hard work. Very dedicated staff. I also want to thank Senator Mike McGuire, Assemblymember Jim Wood, and Supervisor James Gore. I've worked closely with them over the years, very supportive of our city. They understand the constraints that we operate under. They're always there, willing to do what they can to help. And we've accomplished quite a bit of things, but with their guidance, it's made it really easy in some areas to help get the approvals we need to move certain things forward. I want to just also thank the residents of Cloverdale for all their support and for being active and stay engaged. It's important to be engaged. We need to hear what you want. You need to tell us. If we're not doing something right, we need to hear it because we're here to represent your needs as well as what's best for the city. And lastly, I just want to thank my family who's supported me all these years, and I just want to say publicly that I appreciate all their support. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Else on the dais before we open up to the public?
Mayor, if I can, thank you for the opportunity to speak. To our two councilmembers that are leaving the dais this evening and our councilmember or vice mayor that's going to be staying on our dais. First, to Councilmember Paula, it's been a real pleasure working with you. We, I think, accomplished a number of really critical projects that will benefit this community for many years to come. And, you know, your support and your pushing those forward, I think, were helpful to be able to deliver, particularly in public works and parks, to deliver some projects that, again, will be, are well utilized and will continue to be well utilized by our community. And I was really proud that we were able to work with you on bringing those projects forward. Councilmember Cruz, I just want to talk a little bit about a little story that you and I engaged in during the pandemic and when we had that conversation about the needs of our community during a time that was very challenging. And you and I shared a little bit of, you know, our personal view on how difficult it is for members of our community to go without food and how challenging it was during the pandemic for members of our community to address that food insecurity. And so I feel like that was an area where you and I had a real opportunity to connect at a level that sometimes staff cannot connect with councilmembers. We connected it in our hearts and our feelings in terms of an issue that continues to be something that this community is going to confront and our state confronts with the lack of food resources. And I just want to acknowledge that you are a champion in terms of working to bring food to our members of our community, personally delivering that food and hand-delivering it and, you know, fighting to make sure that we were getting the resources that we needed to ensure that our seniors and our families and our Latinx population, you know, got those resources that they sorely needed. And, you know, coming from a family myself that often had and experienced food challenges growing up, I really connected with you on that. And I did want to say, that's something I really think, want to say thank you for all that work that you put in. You have a long list of accomplishments, and it was almost too much to be able to even put on a plaque or a proclamation. But in particular, I just want to acknowledge the work that you did in the arena of food insecurity because I know that was a real connection to our community. So, thank you. And Vice Mayor Walter, I look forward. I know you've put in a tremendous amount of time and effort in your role as a mayor a number of times, vice mayor and councilmember, and all the work you put into multiple subcommittees. But I continue to, I look forward to continuing working with you. I know we've got a lot more work to do. It's nonstop, so I look forward to working with you in your next term.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
From the public, want to make any comments? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Lariva Miles. It's so great to be back in Cloverdale. I've been down in Los Angeles for the last six months, and it's so nice to come home to a place I've been a citizen for about 15 years here. And it's nice to come home and just say, what's that sound? And it's the sound of absolute silence, which is just so wonderful when you've been in LA for a while. Anyway, I just wanted to come and address all the city councilmembers, all the members of our administration in our city. And I just want to thank all of those of you who have put in a lot of time and energy into making this city what it is, which is a great place to come home to. But I also want to celebrate and commend Councilmember Cruz for what she has brought to this city. When I used to come to city council meetings for probably over six years, I would get up to speak. Sometimes I was the only person in the audience, and I've had more than a few citizens come up to me and say, will you go up there and speak for me? Will you go up there and say this and this? And I'd say, well, I can't really speak to you, but this is speak for you, but this is how you might do it. And I just really feel that Councilmember Cruz has taken a lot of time, energy, blood, sweat, and tears to represent those who in the past have not been able to speak. She has been a great councilmember on a local level, on a regional level, and on a state level in that she has really represented us well and that we now have a presence for a person of color on this council, which we have not had in the time that I've been here. So I just want to thank you for being a trailblazer, for doing a great job and making sure that when you're leaving now, there are lots of organizations that are now here because you helped to start them that were never here before. So, Marta, thank you very much for everything that you've done for the city of Cloverdale.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Saying none? Could we get pictures of everyone? Well, we can't leave without a hug. You're not wearing a mask for it, though.
Actually, I'll bring it tomorrow.
Councilmember Cruz has somewhere she has to be, so she's going to be leaving the dais and leaving the meeting. With that, we're going to move forward. Do pictures with council on a break after we finish our couple of last items. The next item up under G, Public Hearings, is G1, the adoption of the 2022 California Building Standards Codes and the 2022 Fire Code by Reference and Amending Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Cloverdale Municipal Code.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'll just be really quick since we did have a discussion about this at our last meeting. This is the adoption of the 2022 Building Code Standards and Fire Code. We introduced it on November 9th. We had a little bit of a discussion at that point, so staff is recommending that you adopt the ordinance, adopting the 2022 Building Code and Fire Code. If adopted tonight, it will go into effect in 30 days.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Any comments from the public regarding this item?
Mayor Lance, no one's raising their hand at this time on, in person or online.
Thank you, sir.
I'm happy to move the item.
Do you have a motion?
It's an ordinance. Do you want us to read the ordinance by title? Can I recommend the ordinance by title only? Happy to do that. I move to adopt the ordinance by title only. Are you happy now? My whole goal is to make you happy, Jose. All right, are you happy now? All right. And I hear there's a second. I'd be happy to read it. I won't get around to it, and people are going to be really sorry. An ordinance of the City of Cloverdale repealing and replacing Cloverdale Municipal Code, Chapters 15 through 15 dot 18, and adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Standards Code Title 24, the 2022 California Administrative Code Part 1, including tables, and the 2022 California Building Code Part 2, including tables and appendices C, I, J, O, and P, the 2022 California Residential Building Code Part 2.5, including tables and appendices AH, AQ, AS, AX, and AZ, the 2022 California Electrical Code Part 3, including tables and appendices A, B, C, F, and G, the 2022 California Mechanical Code Part 4, including tables and appendices B, C, and F, the 2022 California Plumbing Code Part 5, including tables and appendices A, B, C, D, G, I, J, and K, the 2022 California Energy Code Part 6, including tables and appendices 1A, the 2022 California Historical Building Code Part 8, including tables and appendix A, the 2022 California Fire Code Part 9, with appendices standards and NFPA standards by reference, 2022 California Existing Building Code Part 10, including tables and appendix A, Chapters A1 through A5, the 2022 California Agreed Building Standards Code Part 11, including tables and appendices A4 and A5, the 2022 California Reference Standard Code Part 12 of Title 24, including tables, and the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code.
I'll second that. That was exhausting.
I'm going to just head to El Milagro with those guys, and I'll pick this up later.
What was crazy is watching the ticker at the bottom keep up with you.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry to our.
Transcribing on the bottom of our screen, word for word.
I am. Thank you, and I am sorry for that.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Right with that, Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Adoption of the ordinance passes four to one. Forwarding President with Councilmember Cruz being absent. Four zero.
Four zero. And I don't know if it was noted for the minutes that she left at 6:44. I believe that's correct. Okay, next, New Business H1, Consider Adopting Resolution Approving an Individual At-Will Employment Agreement with Derek Montane for the position of Public Works Director for the City of Cloverdale.
Mayor, members of council, I can't say how delighted and excited I am that we're bringing this forward, this item, tonight. The item in your packet is an employment agreement with Mr. Derek Monti. He is in the audience tonight, and I'll invite him up shortly. The employment agreement in your packet is for a term commencing on January 2nd of 2023, so that'd be immediately after the New Year's holiday. The proposed base compensation is $139,245.71. It's a step three in your adopted public works salary schedule. The severance package is for three months' base salary. We certainly hope that won't ever be needed. Vacation leave accrual of 20 years per day or 7.69 hours per pay period, accrual of 10 hours per month of sick leave, and administrative leave of up to 80 hours per calendar year as provided for in the agreement. Likewise, there's a mobile device stipend of $50 per month, consistent with other senior staff, and an annual membership fee of up to $1,000 per year. The at-will employment agreement is included in the packet. The resolution in your packet would adopt the at-will employment agreement. The staff's recommendation, my recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the agreement tonight, but before doing so, I just want to tell you a little bit about Mr. Monti. He has been a city resident for over 16 years now. He graduated from one of our very close high schools, Hillsburg High. Attended both Santa Rosa Junior College and Sac State where he obtained some of the water quality certification certificates that were, that are so important for the position of Public Works Manager. For the last eight years, he's been the Operations Manager for Ridge Vineyards or Ridge Winery, in which he's overseen a number of the functions that he would oversee in the capacity of Public Works Director and also has experience of working on heavy equipment. And he worked for CATS, CATS for you in Hillsburg. In addition, he also brings with experience working with, you know, many of our regional agencies that we often partner with or work with in collaboration, including the State Water Resource Control Board. And I know he has a lot of passion around that. So I'm really delighted to invite Derek, if you want to come up to the dais, introduce yourself. He does have, I think, two of his kids are in the Cloverdale Unified School District system.
Hi, I'm Derek.
Really delighted to introduce Derek.
My son Braxton, my daughter Daisy. Yeah, I'm just excited to join the team. I think we could do good stuff, and, you know, I've had a lot of close workings with the Water Resource and Control Board and, you know, a lot of chemical reporting and all kinds of things like that, you know? And I think it would be really good for the city, and I'm excited to join the team. Is there any questions?
First question, I got to get it out of the way. We said your last name different, and I should have asked before the meeting.
It's a hard E, so. It's a hard E, so it's Montani.
Got it. Okay, well, let's open up the dais. Who wants to go first?
Just, I want to welcome you to the city of Cloverdale. You're joining a great team. I guarantee you one thing, you'll go home tired because there's a lot of work and not a lot of staff, but you know what? They're a good staff. They work hard, and we're excited that you're coming. Welcome. Thank you.
I just wanted to say welcome, and I was very excited to hear about your background with Ridge because they have just been a leader in sustainability and innovative practices for decades. And so I think that that, your work in, with regional water, that was like, was that my first question? Oh, he has experience working with the Regional Water Quality, Quality Control Board and, and filling out all of the, the water quality paperwork and making sure our permits are, are in good standing and up to date. And that also, what I look forward to is the proactive vision that you, you bring in how we're going to be adapting to climate change. And we, you know, we had the presentation from the Alexander Valley Property Owners Group. You know, our water in our region is evolving and changing, and we absolutely have to have, you know, someone like you with, in your background, on board with a vision for moving the community forward. So thank you so much. And I don't, it's like, I'm, you know, you've lived here for 16 years. It's not like we're welcoming you to the community, but we're welcoming you to the, to the team. So it's, we're really happy to have you.
Thank you.
And I think that, yeah, I was, hopefully, we're never going to use that, any of that severance, yeah, because I think David might go, he might go Kathy Bates on you. So we would want to make sure that you're happy and look forward to working with you.
I'm excited.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't know what else I could add to what's already been said, but I'm just excited that you're with us, look forward to working with you, look forward to seeing you at the Public Works Subcommittee meetings. Hopefully, I'll still be on that. And I'm glad that you have all of your certifications. That's really important to the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. At this time, I'd like to open up to public comment. Does anyone here want to make a public comment regarding this item? Seeing no one in the audience, and no hands on Zoom, I will bring it back to the dais.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce the resolution by title only, a resolution of City Council, City of Cloverdale, approving an at-will employment agreement with Derek Montani, E., Montani, as Cloverdale Public Works Director.
Second.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Resolution passes four to zero.
All right, welcome to the team officially.
Congratulations.
H2, adopting the official canvas of the votes cast at the general municipal election held on November 8th, 2022, for ballot measure K, to prohibit the sale of fireworks, and the election of three members of the city council and the city treasurer, declaring the election of such council members and declaring the results of said election and such other matters as provided by law.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The, really, the purpose of this agenda item, as much as you just stated, is to adopt the resolution, adopting the official canvas of votes from the November 8th, 2022 general election, and to declare the results of the official statement of vote and declaring the elected three members of the city council and the results of measure K to, as well as to elect a city treasurer. Do want to note that we did not receive any qualified candidates for the position of city treasurer, so that is something that we will, will be necessary to bring back to council to either consider a special election or appointment of a city treasurer. So our recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution that would approve the official canvas of votes based on the results that were provided by the Sonoma County Register of Voters.
Sir, any comments? Seeing none? Any public comments on this item? Seeing none? Bring it back to the dais.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the resolution by title only, a resolution of City Council, City of Cloverdale, adopting the official canvas of the votes cast at the general, general municipal election held on November 8th, 2022, for ballot measure K, to prohibit the sales of fireworks and the election of three council members of the city council and the city treasurer, hereby declaring the election of such council members and declaring the results of said election and such other matters as provided by law.
Second.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. So at this point, I'll explain real quick what's going to happen with the reorganization of the council. We'll take a quick five to 10 minute break, give everybody a chance to take pictures with their family, with whoever they would like to, and then we will come back, reconvene, and swear in our new members of council. So at this point, 10 minute break starting at 6:57.
Recording stopped.
At seven eleven, the next item is H three council reorganization. The newly elected council members will be sworn into office now by Michael Maloney and seated at the dais.
Thank you, Mayor. If the council member elects can now come in, uh, in line to me. Go ahead and grab a microphone, turn it on. They are not. They have your name on them. And that's for you to be able to read along while we do this oath of office. Walk in line shoulder to shoulder and put your right hand up. So the oath of affirmation of allegiance for public officers, the execution of the oath is required by Article twenty, section three of the Constitution of the State of California. With that, if you can please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Gus Walter.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, you are officially on council.
Need a pin? Okay. Councilmember Wheeler, you have a seat right here with your name on it. Just did that. Councilmember Morgan Stern, I have a seat right here for you. Just seat adjusted. Joe always wanted the pillow, but we never got it for him. There's handles here to adjust up, down, off the back, whatever you want to do. They're on both sides here.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Okay, we good? Everyone good? Welcome. Anyone want to say anything at this point or? All right. Next item up is H four, the selection of the mayor and selection of the vice mayor. Who would like to go first?
Mr. Mayor.
That's crickets.
Nobody's going first. I'd like to go first. I'd like to, um, just say traditionally, the vice mayor moves into the position of mayor. That's the way we've pretty much always done it. And, um, some things have changed in my personal life over the last eight months or so. And I really don't feel that I'm in a position to take over the responsibilities of the mayor. So as a result, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Todd Lance to be mayor for another twelve months. Like I said, some things have changed in my personal life. Um, I'll be more than happy to continue as vice mayor if that's the way things turn out to be, but, um, I don't want the responsibilities of mayor right now. You have done an excellent job over the last twelve months. You're in everything, you know. I mean, you're there helping the chamber, uh, you're helping the public work crew today, you're helping the veterans pour that cement slab. Um, you know everyone, born and raised in Cloverdale, Cloverdalian at heart. You went to, you, you went to Cloverdale High School. That's where you graduated from. That's the type of individual we need as mayor. Um, somebody who's tuned in to the community, um, not to mention, um, you, you, you have a young family. And I think it's important that, um, you're the face of Cloverdale and you should represent us on the council again. Like I said, that's my nomination. It's out there. Looking for a second.
You had to push the button, turn it on.
Mayor, I second that.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone else or make any feedback? For a public comment? Uh, yes, ma'am, please. You're first. Microphone on, Michael.
Uh, once again, my name is Lariva Miles. I have been a citizen of Cloverdale for about fifteen years. And before you vote to, um, elect, uh, Mayor Lance one more time, I would ask you to consider Melanie Bagby, who has really given a lot of her years, time and experience to helping to govern this city. She was on the planning commission for six years. She has been a, um, a council member for the last six years. She has also represented Cloverdale in local, regional and state politics for all the time that she's been here. She's been a citizen of over twenty years of Cloverdale. And I think that, um, I appreciate everything that, um, Vice Mayor Walter has done for the city as well as Mayor Lance. But I do think that we can't overlook the amount of experience that, uh, Councilmember Bagby has brought to this city council and to, um, the credit that she has brought to Cloverdale just because of all of the different organizations that she has belonged to, that she has spent lots of time, energy and, um, taken on extricate, extra education to make sure we are well represented all over the state. So I would ask you to consider, um, electing her the next mayor of Cloverdale because I think she is willing, ready, able and very experienced at doing that as she has held the office before. Thank you.
Thank you, Lariva. Any other public comments? Please step up to the mic.
Angela Cordova. Um, Melanie, you have done a lot of good things for our community. I will say that. Um, but I believe that everything you've done, Mayor Lance, um, you need to finish. You've got a lot of irons in the fire. You've, um, brought, had a lot of accomplishments and there's still a lot that have been unresolved because obviously you're still in, in motion, if you will. So I think that it's important that you get, continue on your path for probably another twelve months and maybe longer, who knows? But you should definitely get recognition for all of the things that you have brought to our community in just your twelve months of being mayor. So I think that it's appropriate that the council remain the way it is, Vice Mayor Walter and Mayor Lance. And thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, city staff, chief, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I too would support the nomination of, uh, Mr. Lance as mayor once again. Uh, Vice Mayor, I would encourage you to perhaps select a new candidate, uh, perhaps Mr. Wheeler or even, uh, Ms. Mortensen. Uh, I think if, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, you continue to remain in the position, I think you could do a great job in bringing these folks up. Uh, if I could, please, just a minute more, uh, and please forgive me, uh, it's painful for me to do. I would discourage you from considering Ms. Bagby as a candidate for mayor. If I could, I'd like to share with you my experience with Ms. Bagby as mayor.
No, no, let's.
No. That's unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Or public comment? Anyone in Zoom world, like, it's kind of moving around right now, so I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Lance. No one's raising their hand at this time.
Mayor, if I can, I just want to let the record reflect that, uh, after the agenda was posted in, in, late this afternoon, we did receive three emails, um, uh, one from Tammy DeAngelo, uh, one from Renee Tierney, as well as, uh, Terry Rowley. Uh, the three emails, uh, are recommending or, or indicating their support uh, for Mayor Lance, uh, to continue in the role as mayor.
Bring it back to the dais. Yeah, any comments? Seeing none.
All right, with that, we have one nomination on the floor. Member Bagby?
No.
We have a new alphabetical order. I'm going to think about it. Councilmember Morgan Stern?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheeler? Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
All right, with that, the motion passes for Mayor Lance to continue for another year.
And.
And will stay the mayor.
Next, we will move on to Vice Mayor. Anyone want to make any motions or nominations?
Mayor, I nominate, uh, Councilmember Walter for Vice Mayor.
We have a second. Okay, Morgan Stern with the second. Any comments? We'll, we'll move to public comment if there's none up here. So please, Lariva.
Again, Lariva Miles, citizen of Cloverdale. My understanding is that if you were moving in the normal rotation, that would mean that, uh, Councilmember Bagby would be up for Vice Mayor at this time. And I would ask you to consider nominating her for that position based upon her experience and her position in the rotation for the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Lariva. Other public comment?
Mayor, no one's raising their hands online and appears no one else.
Okay. None online and none in the audience. We will bring it back to the dais. Other comments here? Seeing none?
Councilmember Bagby?
No.
Councilmember Morgan Stern?
Yes.
Councilmember Wheeler? Council, or, yeah, Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Walter is Vice Mayor.
Okay, moving on. H five, review and discussion of updated City Council twenty twenty-three Subcommittee, Joint Committee and Regional Board Committee appointments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, this item doesn't require any action tonight. Um, it, uh, with the seating of the new council, uh, this is, um, part of the process to prepare for, uh, ultimate subcommittee assignments, regional board appointments. Um, by way of seeking y- your feedback on, uh, your seating on the, on the, on the six subcommittees and regional boards, uh, included in your packet is a, uh, set of, uh, preference ranking worksheets. The, the intent is, uh, for each of you to, uh, identify your preferences from, for, in terms of subcommittees, really, uh, ranking them from one to six. Uh, one being the highest ranking, meaning that's the subcommittee that you'd like to sit on. And six is the subcommittee that you're, you would least be interested in, in sitting on. Uh, likewise, there is a preference worksheet for the host of regional board, uh, um, assignments and/or appointments and to indicate your interest in, uh, participating in, on those boards or, uh, 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 you know, regional assignments. Uh, the intent of which is to enable me as a city manager to, uh, come back with a set of recommendations uh, for your formal consideration at the first meeting in January. Uh, and that really will be, my, my recommendations will, will really just be a, a starting point, uh, for, for council deliberation after sorting through the, the rankings and the preferences that you, you provide to me as an individual council member. Uh, encourage you to really, uh, look at the, uh, regional boards in particular. There's, uh, a lot of opportunities to, uh, participate on those boards. And, and, um, even if you may not desire to sit as the primary appointment, you may have an interest in serving as an alternate. And so it encourages you to, um, to look at those. If you have any questions about what the, uh, regional board appointments entails, uh, please, you know, feel free to reach out to me, uh, and, uh, I can provide you additional background information about serving on those regional boards. Um, many of which, uh, do require a, a council member appointment. So, and, and, and to note, they're, they're, they often have, uh, very long agendas, uh, and will, there, there will, uh, usually be an associated commitment to, to attend those meetings and the location where those board meetings are held, uh, many of which are in, in Santa Rosa. Um, so with that said, this is really just an informational item, uh, again, to introduce you to those preference worksheets. Uh, some other, uh, items to consider, uh, that when we bring it back, uh, for, for, for your, your formal, um, feedback is the meeting dates and times. Uh, th- those are not set in stone until council adopts a resolution setting the meeting dates and times. Uh, so it'll be important as part of, uh, your, your, um, deliberation when you, uh, select members to sit on those subcommittees to designate the, the meeting dates and the meeting times. Included in the packet is the, uh, the existing meeting dates and times. Those all work very well, uh, currently. Uh, but those can be adjusted to reflect your individual appointments to those subcommittees. So those are all things to consider. If you have any interest in a different time or a different date, if you want to note that on the preference worksheet, we'll make sure to try to bring that forward when we bring this back in January so that, uh, we, you know, council can deliberate and set those meeting dates and times. Ultimately, once we, once council, uh, finalizes their recommendations at the first meeting in January, we'll bring those back for adoption, uh, by resolution so that, uh, we're in compliance with the Brown Act in terms of setting all of our meeting dates and times for our subcommittees. Uh, that, that concludes the, uh, staff's report on this item. Again, it's informational, so no action required. If, of course, you have any questions at this point or any feedback you'd like to, uh, provide, happy to, uh, entertain any of your questions or comments.
Could we set a date to get this information back to you to make sure that you have enough time to get it to our meeting?
Absolutely. So, um, in the agenda report, staff has requested that, uh, you return your preference worksheets, uh, no later than, uh, January second. Um, and that, that would give us adequate time, uh, to, uh, bring back your preferences, to compile your, your preferences and bring those back at the next meeting on, uh, January eleventh. Um, I, I did want to state that, you know, one of the perspectives or guidelines that we'll utilize in terms of, uh, those initial recommendations will be, you know, to try to provide some parity in terms of the number of subcommittees you sit on. So with six of them, traditionally, uh, each council member sits on up to, up to two subcommittees. Uh, it, make every effort to provide for some continuity in membership in terms of one of you serving, continuing to serve on a subcommittee that you serve on now, just so that it, uh, there's not an entirely new, uh, makeup, but that, that's, you know, there's, there's no requirement for that. Uh, and, and also likewise to just try to even the workload, um, because in particular, the regional boards, uh, require a fairly significant commitment. because in particular, the regional boards require a fairly significant commitment of your time.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? Being the newest council member up here, besides you two now, I would recommend meeting with David and Michael. They are a wealth of information on this. So if you have any questions, you need things printed, anything that, if you have any computer issues, anything you guys need, please reach out to them as soon as possible to make sure that you guys are on track and have everything you need. You can always reach out to myself or any other council member because we've been here and we know we've been in your seat. So please do so. Okay? Thank you, guys. All right, moving on. Subcommittee reports. First one is the Finance, Admin and Police.
Mr. Mayor, on next, Finance and Police Administration Subcommittee will be February 2nd. The January 2nd one has been canceled.
Thank you.
February 6th.
February 6th.
I'm sorry, February 6th. Thank you.
Planning and Sustainability?
We'll be meeting February 21st.
Public Works?
January 24th.
Joint City and School? Next meeting is January 16th. And the Homelessness Community Advisory Group is January 10th. Are there any other council reports, David?
No other reports at this time?
One written, sent inside.
I submitted mine in writing.
Any legislative reports, letters of support or opposition? Anything that's popped up? Seeing none? City Manager update?
Mayor, members of council, just want to do a brief update. We had a major water leak this week. Our senior water operator reported on Sunday that we were experiencing a significantly high demand at the water treatment plant. Subsequently, our public work staff did a very exhaustive evaluation of our system. And late Monday evening, our senior water treatment plant operator, Darren Hernandez, was able to finally locate a leak that was occurring on West Third Street under a relatively historic or old culvert. And our staff nearly immediately began repairing that water leak. Unfortunately, we did experience a fairly significant loss of water because of that leak. But with that said, I'm very proud that our staff responded, made the necessary repairs to, you know, basically correct the break in the water main and want to ensure that there was, you know, no impact to the safety of our water supply. It just was an unfortunate circumstance related to, you know, aging and old infrastructure that was, again, quickly repaired. Again, all hands on deck for our staff. Want to acknowledge that they worked well over their normal timeframe to complete the repairs. And I'm really proud of the work and time they put in to address the water emergency that we experienced. So that's really the end of my report. And we'll continue. There are some additional repairs that are needed to both the roadway. We'll be conducting some paving. And we'll be looking at some of the damage to the culvert that will need some minor repairs from the underlying break in our water main.
David, I'd like to piggyback on that and thank the entire city staff that came out on their day off to help find this water leak. We know water is very precious to our city and state right now. And to have a water leak that goes directly into a drain, you don't see it no matter how much you're leaking. And so for them to search the town and find it was very difficult. And they took a lot of time, which they could have been spent with their families. So I appreciate it and I want to thank them personally.
David, could you share with us? I think you mentioned it to me before, but maybe for public record, how many gallons we lost in that problem with that?
Yeah, we're still calculating the, you know, trying to get our best estimate of the amount of water that was lost from the leak. Current estimates are somewhere around about a million gallons that were lost due to the water leak.
Good job to them for doing that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I stopped by today when the crews are working and Jay and Darren were still there, just sort of, you know, overseeing the cleanup. And the contractors were there putting together the robot that goes down into the manholes, which is, you know, we used to have people do that. And now because of the laws around constricted spaces, they were putting together essentially what the bottom part of it looked like, WALL-E from the Pixar movie. And it was just, you know, super cool that we could see this kind of 21st century technology going to seek out the fault from decades old, not a century old, infrastructure. And it really, you know, underlined the fact that our downtown is really aging and we need to have a plan to make sure that this kind of catastrophic leak, and it was a catastrophic leak, doesn't happen again. And we don't waste that amount of water. And that we have a plan moving forward to make, to ensure that these, you know, 100-year-old, in some cases, infrastructure does get replaced. And it's, of course, we have a very good opportunity to do that under the infrastructure bill. But it also underscored the fact that I think we took a really wise forward step on with our water metering project. It really showed how much we need to make sure that that new infrastructure that we know immediately when there's a water leak and we can go and address it. So it was kind of reassuring to me that we're really moving forward in the right direction as far as our infrastructure plan. And it also just illustrated yet again how lucky we are to have the personnel that we have, who are local guys who care so much that they're working on the weekends, they're working late nights. And it really was all hands on deck except for people who were, you know, like out of state on vacation. So it really just shows what a great team we have and how lucky we are in this small town to have such experienced and such thoughtful and, you know, team-oriented employees who are working for unsung, unglamorous, you know, stuff that goes on in the streets that most of the time people don't pay a lot of attention to. So I was glad that the weather cooperated and my schedule cooperated. I was able to run into them and kind of get a firsthand look at what really went on there. And it, yeah, underscores we're going in a really good direction as far as improving our infrastructure. And we need to make sure we continue to move in that direction and that we just have great employees working on this. So my thanks go out to all city staff who are all hands on deck on this. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. I want to acknowledge, one of our staff members was on vacation, out of state, came back early when he heard that the water leak was occurring, reported back to work yesterday. And it was a tremendous help to get the job done. But I also want to acknowledge the council. Most recently, council approved the purchase of, you know, a fairly significant purchase of some new equipment. It was a mini excavator, which enabled them to access the leak much quicker than, and safer than they would have been able to otherwise by doing it by, you know, hand. So that purchase, I know they were kind of sitting there saying, why did it take so long to get it? But they had the necessary equipment to really be able to tackle this job at hand and get it done much faster than they would have been otherwise. And want to acknowledge, I know, I think Councilmember Paula left, but I know he was a big advocate, but this council for supporting the purchase of that equipment because it really made the difference in how we responded to the repair.
Anything else? The attorney?
No comments tonight other than congratulations to our new council members. And I know that I've just let everybody know. I've sent the nice big packet of welcome. Here are the laws that apply. And like I said, I'm always happy to answer any questions, phone calls, meetings, whatever you need. I'm definitely here to help.
Status updates? I know this one sounds, we kind of already went through with the water supply. So maybe we just go to COVID-19? Unless you want to talk about the status of the actual Lake Minassino?
Yeah, just a brief update on the status of Lake Minassino. Of course, we welcome the rains and the rains. We did see a noticeable improvement in the water levels in Lake Minassino. Currently, we are just about 64% of our target water supply, which was a little bit of an uptick from last week. But I expect that with the rain, there will be continual runoff and we'll see that the reservoir levels continue to improve, albeit slightly. With that said, you know, the messaging still is that, you know, the drought continues. It wasn't such a significant rain event that it's going to pull us out of the drought. So we want to just continue to acknowledge the efforts by our community to conserve water and thank their community for all the work that they continue to do because the drought conditions unfortunately do continue to persist.
COVID-19?
Yeah, some recent developments. We anticipate, not specific to COVID-19, but because of the RSV as well as the flu coupled with COVID, it appears that the Bay Area health officers may be forthcoming with a recommendation, not a mandate, but a recommendation for folks to wear masks on an indoor basis, particularly anybody that might have, you know, any, maybe may have any health impairments. That has not been issued yet. We'll continue to monitor that closely to see if that is forthcoming. But there's, in the Bay Area, there's an uptick of hospitalizations, particularly in younger kids because of the RSV virus. And we're seeing, it seems like it's a fairly bad flu year.
Questions from council? Okay. Future agenda items?
Just a thought following up on our conversation about supporting the Alexander Valley landowners. It might, the formation of a group to represent the property owners. It might be a good idea to have a staff report and maybe have Vanessa or we could put our new Public Works Director on the spot with a presentation of the current water situation with the status of Potter Valley and all the players and our part in moving forward, making sure that we have a secure source of water for our residents. So if we're going to have a conversation about why we might want to support the formation, it might be a good idea to have a refresher and maybe an introduction to that really complex issue.
Also, I would like to have a future agenda item or maybe it can be you send something out, David, to schedule the council workshop for the year, for 2023. I think February is probably the best, looking at dates of meetings and things, to try to schedule into February if we could. Just get it done as soon as possible for everyone.
Absolutely, Mayor. I just, this week had a conversation with a meeting facilitator about kind of a goal-setting workshop, council workshop in February or possibly early March. I do want to note that council is scheduled. Our new council members and our mayor are scheduled to attend the new mayor's and council members' Cal Cities League Conference. So that'll be a week prior to the second meeting in February. So we'll be considering scheduling it to kind of make sure it revolves around that training with Cal Cities.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned at 7:45.